Good evening and welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, April 12, 2016, now called Order at approximately 7:03 PM. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast by local access programming. Is there anyone here in the audience that's recording tonight's meeting? Okay. There being none, please rise and join us in a salute to the flag.
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time I'd like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, and each of the planning board members to please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted my consent. The first item on our agenda this evening is an A&R for 25 Walsh Avenue. Anyone here for the A&R 25 Walsh?
Yes. Lame of length, I represent the butler who intends to acquire the property.
Please, have a seat. Any questions?
We'll discuss.
Yep, okay. Go ahead.
Yes, I represent James and Arlene Pishi. They're the owners of property at 27 Walsh Avenue. Mr. Pishi's sister and brother-in-law are the owners of the property next door, which is 25 Walsh Avenue. The property at 25 Walsh Avenue, there's been an issue and questions, as you can see, regarding the driveway and some other appurtenances to the residential home that have been there for many years. The parties have resolved their differences by suggesting that they divide out the piece of property to include now the paved driveway, which really belongs with 27 Walsh Avenue, a portion of the deck, which has been there for many years, and then the portion of the shed, which you can see at the end of the paved driveway. So this proposal is in order to essentially resolve any problems with encroachment which 27 had onto 25. And as a result of that, I do not represent Paul Pishi and Mr. Weatherby, but I've been involved with their attorney, and this is a proposal that we suggested in order to resolve the problem between the parties. So essentially, parcel A of about 4,338 square feet would be joined, if the board approves this plan, would be joined with my client's property at 27 Walsh Avenue, deducting that from 25 Walsh Avenue.
Can both lots be voted on?
Yes, through the chair, I had a chance to review the plan of the initial application. There were a couple of minor changes that needed to be made, which I addressed with the applicant. These changes have been made, plan was delivered to us today, and I verified that those changes are reflected on these revised additions that are before us today. It was just minor, little things, just the description of the ownership of each parcel should need to be consistent with both parcels, and that the frontage and dimensions for both lots needed to be shown. And it appears with both those changes, modifications have been made, and I believe this is an accurate representation of an A&R plan for the board.
Mr. Roth, do you have anything you'd like to?
No. Defer to Matt as far as legalities.
Mr. Kowski, any questions?
I didn't hear the whole presentation.
Mr. Weaver, Mr. Brooks.
Just that little sliver's being transferred to the other one, so it makes it more than enough.
That's great.
Fine.
Will entertain a motion?
I'll make that motion if we approve.
Second?
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All set?
Thank you. Shit of us. My lawyer and the cop before you leave, okay? I'm just gonna sign it now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Section 5.3.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the construction of a single-family dwelling at 310 Lester Street. Matt?
Thank you. Just for the record, one of the absent members for your original opening of this hearing, Mr. Roth has read or watched the film for the previous meeting and is now eligible for tonight, courtesy of the Mullen Room. So you have five members voting on the application.
Thank you.
I'm Patrick Burke, civil engineer for H S M T Group, representing the applicant. Came in with the Hammerhead lot off of Lester Street. And there was a question about real drive. We've engaged Attorney Jurors Keritzky, and he's written a letter with evidence that it was a private drive that was in existence before 1956 when the Subdivision Control Act took effect. Brought copies of the letter to look at tonight. What we'd like to do, if we can agree that with the evidence in the letter, if this is a private drive, we would proceed with an A&R plan with real drive being a private way.
Oh, so this isn't a shed drive? This is a?
This is, it was a common drive before, where we were considering it, but Attorney Keritzky looked at it, and he believes it's a private drive now with evidence in the letter because it was a private way before 1956.
Go ahead.
First on the table.
We just got this today. No, we don't expect a decision tonight. We can look it over.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead and?
Says what Attorney Keritzky did with his discovery. It was a private drive, private way in the town before prior to 1956, when the Subdivision Control Act took place, which means it would allow frontage to be up the lot, and it would not be, as long as it's a passable way, it's not subject to the Subdivision Control Law for the way. So what we'd like to do, if we can agree that it's a private way based on this letter, we don't have to do it tonight, we can look it over. We will withdraw the Hammerhead special permit and move forward with an A&R.
Chair, would the applicant be amenable to a continuance request to give us time to answer this?
Absolutely.
Intain a motion to continue the hearing in two weeks?
Sure. Furthermore, I would like to have this reviewed by town councils, so I'm not gonna review this one on my own, so I would recommend the town council to make the review.
Okay.
Need extra time for that, Matt?
More than two weeks.
I think continuing it to the next meeting would be sufficient, and if we need more time, we could keep the applicant informed.
If we need us, maybe the town council, so we can do that.
I'll make that motion. Second?
Heard the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Applicant Jimmy George's trustee requesting a special permit for Hammerhead lot under Section 5.3.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the proposed construction of a single-family dwelling on property located at 12 William Street in Auburn.
I'm Patrick Burke, chief assistant chief of our plan of the applicant. We have presented the plan of Hammerhead Lot for William Street, cutting the lot up, the house coming back in the back. We addressed most of the comments from the DCG hearing, speaking of the width of the driveway. We provided for last meeting, people were concerned with the butters about lighting, you know, possibly with cars coming out, and screening on the sides. We provided arborite fencing along both sides, this side here and this side, to address those comments. We've got a drainage well in the back on this side of the property that extends, that keeps the drainage pattern keeping towards the back. I've also got rooftop runoff going into Coltech Subsurface Infiltration System in the back to relieve the impact of the permary areas.
How is that gonna affect that home that's at the back of it, down at the bottom of the hill if that's draining back towards their property?
It should not. It's buried enough where there shouldn't be breakout in the back. It's not steep enough slope, so it meets the master water standards for breakout.
The side screening, what is it?
Arborites.
I appreciate you staking the site. Took another drive out there now that it's been staked. I just have a concern, I recognize that this may meet all of the required boundaries as far as the regulations go, but I believe one of those things is also a judgment decision as to whether or not this is consistent with the neighborhood. And when I go down that street, there's not anything else on that side of the road that would be in that location behind the house. It just doesn't seem to me to really fit the character of the neighborhood, so I'd be curious as to what the other members of the board felt, and also what members of the audience might want to admit.
I have to agree. I walked the property too after it was staked, and it just doesn't seem to keep the character with that neighborhood. And I just can't imagine how it's gonna affect that house down the back of it either. I mean, there's a water issue there, as it is in that area, and I don't know if it would be, I'd be disturbed by this. You'll get your opportunity.
We could put another swell in the back, diverting the water away from the house in the back of the property too.
Mr. Roth?
No comments yet.
Mr. Kowski?
No, they took care of that well that was forbidden, right?
Yes, we're gonna get rid of that one.
Mr. Brooks, did you have something you wanted to share?
I have that same concern, that it's not, it's just dropping it right in somebody's backyard. It's not consistent. What, Matt, what is the exact 1/8?
Through the chair, the special permit findings, Section 9351, to the degree to which the activity site plan and building designer consistent with surrounding development.
Wish to take an opportunity to hear from some of the people in the audience. Sir, you had your hand up. Could you please stand up and tell us your name?
Yeah, my name is Steve Pauline, I live at number 12 William Street, to the right, excuse me, 10 William Street. The concerns were with the size of the ranch house that I have there and the size of the property. This is definitely an encroachment on, you know, on what we consider to be our, you know, little haven away from city life. It looks like it's just gonna be, it's gonna definitely alter the way our life is gonna be appropriated through this point because of its, you know, we all know, we don't know what's gonna happen. We don't know who's gonna be there or what. The concerns with it now, I mean, you can put a bough of wood fencing you want, the, first of all, we talked about putting up the border on the east side with arborites and stuff. I thank you for putting, you know, for at least showing that there are some, but it doesn't go back far enough. I don't know if it could ever go back far enough. It's definitely taking a neighborhood that's, you know, with single dwellings and turning it into more of a condo-type thing, more of a city feel. It's not a happy thing. I'm not trying to stop progress, and I understand things are there, but it's definitely not what we expect, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sir?
My name is Marco Pachara. I'm at 16 William Street, the house directly to the left. And I share the same concerns as my neighbors here, but particularly where the topography is on where the projected driveway would be, is, and if you went down, you know there's a ton of ledge, you could see it from the road, and it's quite a bit raised, dips right into my property. I already have water, some, you know, barely manage more water in the basement. I'm very concerned about what it would do to tap into that ledge, the flow of the water, tapping into those veins, what it's gonna do to my basement. I'm very, very concerned about that. I appreciate the, you know, the efforts here, but I just don't think you can, you can address my concerns in any, in any way here, because that driveway is right on ledge, that whole, that whole driveway is ledge. The trees there don't grow big because they don't, they can't grow deep enough, they'll topple over because of that ledge. So anyway, that's my main concern. Also, I wanna make sure that, you know, if this does push through, that anything can be done around the shrubbery of four seasons, sucking up as much water as possible. You know, my kids have the little playground off to the side, the basement's getting wet, anything that we can do to sort of absorb the water that's gonna be disturbed with that kind of a property. Anyway, so I appreciate, I appreciate you guys going down there and looking at it, making sure you understand what the neighborhood is like, what the topography is like. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Anyone else like to say anything? Jonathan?
I guess I'm just curious, Matt, maybe if you can give a little more understanding of kind of what is our prerogative here? I just, I look at a lot of the other Hammerhead lots that we reviewed, and I feel like they were larger sites, the area was potentially a little more receptive to it, there was a little bit more shielding or buffering amongst the other houses. I mean, I think in this case, he's basically in one guy's backyard and staring at another one. I'm just curious as to what is the board's purview here?
Well, the board doesn't necessarily have to disclose its purview during the open hearing. You have, at the, once the hearing presumably gets closed, you have 90 days to render a decision. And discussions don't have to necessarily take place regarding the board's purview at this time, although you can. My opinion for that matter, I think it's something to consider. Instead of just a?
Needs some thought and discussion. Jonathan?
Just confused as to, so you're suggesting we do like a legal review, or should we? I'm just not really clear as to what you're?
Sure. I'd be curious to hear the board's vote before I kind of make my recommendation, so that being said, it may be, if you're leaning in one direction, you may want to ask the applicant if they wish to provide additional information at future hearing before you decide to lean towards a vote. Is there any further information from the public or the applicant?
Do you want to say something else?
Ah, yes. I, well, my initial impression is we're not in favor of the project to begin with, but if in fact it was, it was to proceed, whether or not it does or not, the gentleman that's heading off, heading the renovation of the existing property there, I would prefer, I would really appreciate it if the board could do something in regards to hours of work, hours of deliveries, that's the biggest thing. You can say work can't start till 9 o'clock in the morning, but they're coming at 6:21 AM to drop off a dumpster, you know, the companies. I understand they deliver, but they can go to, they can do the commercial properties first and then go to residential. People bringing trailers into the area, noise and so forth, we all, most of us have dogs on the street, one noise, you know, from someone that's not in the neighborhood.
Sets them all off.
It's a chain reaction, and it's very upsetting. At 6:21, I have the picture of it, with the dumpster being brought into the driveway. So hours of construction and hours of delivery are very, very critical. I mean, I'd appreciate it if it could be taken into effect.
Certainly. Did you want to add something?
I'm gonna share the same concerns. I'm living William Street in Auburn, my name's Tom Riley, same concerns as Steve. And the other thing too is, we're building another, some of you folks have been up there, there's a lot of houses real close, and oddly enough, in that section of Auburn, we're all on well water, it's not town water, so now we're gonna add another house and another well, an existing aquifer, and, you know, I don't, I mean, we're talking about drainage, and that always has an impact, and oddly enough, I can be lower than some of these, some of my neighbors, and they'll have water before I will. It's all ledge up there, any time you disrupt something up there, you're gonna disrupt, until you do it, you don't know what you're doing. I mean, it's just gonna happen. And so you run the risk of further problems, and like I said, I don't, you know, we've got, well, what have we, one acre, two acre lots is the most, maybe not even that.
One, under an acre.
Under an acre, all of us. So, you know, we just, you know, you're putting another well in another small area of water, and we've already added two houses, one of which is on town water, but the other one is on well water.
The two, the new ones that?
Two new ones. The one closest to Oxus Street, they're on town water. The one, the next one up is on well water, they're in the same aquifer, and now we're gonna put another one in the same aquifer, and I don't know how, what impact that's gonna have on us, but during drought years, that may be an issue.
Thank you. Anybody else?
The fact that it's a Hammerhead lot and not an A&R lot allows us to review some of these other issues that aren't defined within the bylaw, and that's where it comes into the effect that it's, it's, like you said, it's, there's a lot, bigger lots and different lots. This is like dead square in the backyard of another person that's gonna look, and you just, I mean, it's a major effect on the lives of the people that live around there and already have been established. I mean, it's, you know, it's like dropping that other house right, no one's expecting to see that house. And it is allowed, but if all the criteria are met.
Is that a picture of? There it is, William Street right there. Yeah.
Yeah, we're right up here. Right up here. So we thought it would fit a well because of the condos in the back, it wasn't buffering in another residential neighborhood, so it would come in off the back here instead of in the back opposite from the other houses, ten in line, 218 here. We also?
In line with 218, but 218's frontage is on Oxus Street North. Yeah, no, that's a stretch.
And having been on the street, I think the separation between this street and the condo complex in the back is prepronounced, I mean, you wouldn't, you wouldn't see that, experience that from William Street.
I think we should take a vote up and down.
I think we should, at a minimum, I think Matt made a good suggestion, we close the hearing and give us further opportunity to discuss before we make a rule. Matt?
Furthermore, I think it would be wise to offer the applicant an opportunity to either request the close or request a continuance if they?
Yeah, we're, we're better off to make pushes around the outside, any kind of, to appease the butters to additional pushes on the outside. We feel that the drainage is working, driveway coming in pretty much stays, the delay of the land as it is, doesn't disturb it, we've put the swell on the side.
So you're not gonna have to blast any ledge to get that driveway in there?
If we do, it won't be substantial about. It's maybe just for the base cost, where we came in and followed the, pretty much the topography of the site with like a foot or two.
But the ledge comes up off the road four or five feet anyway.
Yep, that little area, it wouldn't be like a major.
And it doesn't go back any farther? It's just what you see there?
I'm not sure until we totally dig it out.
Till you get into it?
We didn't, we're not cutting in like five or six feet, we're cutting down maybe a foot or two.
And how long is that driveway supposed to be and go into the backyard?
It's about 120 feet.
Mr. Weaver?
I don't know that my opinion's gonna change that much with more deliberation on it, but I might offer a motion to deny the permit, if that's appropriate.
May I, uh, through the chair?
Just close the hearing first?
We need a hearing, and that's why I was, through the chair, if the applicant wishes to continue or is looking to push for a vote this evening, or push to close under time constraint, so I guess that's a question for the applicant.
I'm not sure there's too much more I can do with the lot. I think this is about what we could do to appease everybody.
I was gonna ask you that. What could you do to the lot to make it more satisfying than what you've already done? It doesn't look like?
We've looked at putting in houses similar to what's in the neighborhood back there, screening the outside, preventing the drainage, sticking with the lay of the land for the most part.
I don't think, I'm gonna, I don't think my vote on this is gonna change any with the review either, only because, I'm always saying this because of the fact that it doesn't look like there's anything more that he can do than he's already done to make it work, and it doesn't really look like it's working, especially if you've gotta go with a pounder into that, into that ledge to get that ledge out of there. What they usually do is they put a pounder on a excavator rather, that's an option rather than blasting.
Yeah, we'd hammer it up, most likely.
Hammer it up. And that's gonna open up all kinds of cracks, let me tell you. You're gonna create other water problems with that. I know because my whole place is on ledge, but, but anyway, that's my opinion.
What would you like to do?
I think we should close the hearing.
Intain a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
May I recommend that we take a little discussion on the vote till the end of the meeting?
Sure.
Continue with the rest of the agenda.
Okay.
For our bylaws, we have 90 days to render a decision after the closing.
You're gonna wait until the, just the end of this meeting, correct?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Just to present the information, to get the other public hearing going.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to the Selco partnership DBA Verizon Wireless, requesting a special permit for personal wireless service facility utility pool attachment under Section 9.3.11 of the Auburn zoning bylaws on property located on Southwood Street.
Good evening, board members. My name's Chris Winniarski. I'm an attorney for Verizon Wireless. So we're here tonight on a continuation from last month's hearing where we made a proposal, answered some questions, and I think we're essentially here tonight just to have more board members to maybe get a more accurate vote in terms of the consensus of maybe what the community would like to see. I can certainly answer any additional questions that anyone may have, or if there's any members who didn't have the benefit of my presentation and only read, watched the video or read the application, I'm happy to answer any questions they have.
Mr. Roth?
No, I watched the last meeting again, and I also read all the data on the?
get a more accurate vote in terms of the consensus of maybe what the community would like to see. I can certainly answer any additional questions that anyone may have or if there's any members who didn't have the benefit of my presentation and only read, watched the video or, or read the application, I'm happy to answer any questions they have.
Mr. Raffa?
No, I, I watched the last meeting again and I also read all the data on the, on the antennas. The only fight fights he can win. And I can't see how we can stop this.
Mr. Kowski?
I think it's an improvement. We're not going to have cell towers all over the town. We're going to have cans on poles once in a while. I'm just trying to see that.
Mr. Weaver?
I agree.
Mr. Brooks, any further?
I think I stated last time.
All right. Matt?
Just go ahead, through the chair, I uncovered some information from the FCC's report in order of 2014, just regarding what we can regulate as a board versus the federal unstable laws, one of the things. And it's very specific on the 155-page document, these different kinds of amendments to the 1996 Telecommunications Act. And one of them is very specific to reference these small cells on, co-located on utility, on utility poles, existing utility poles within the right of ways. And it gives us the ability to review a handful of things and I'll just review them for the sake of the meeting. There, one of the things is to make sure there's not a substantial increase in size if it exceeds the height of supporting structures and neither of these exceed the height. So the adjustment we made to put, propose one of them on the side of the pole. And another is, the requirement has, sorry, involve installation of more than four new equipment cabinets on each, and this is one per each, so that doesn't apply. To add impertinence to the body of structure that protrude from the edge of the structure more than 20 feet, and I believe there was, I think you had some dimensions on this out late, 20 feet.
That's not even close. I mean, it's 15 inches in diameter, figure a couple of extra inches for an housing bracket, so two feet.
And the fourth item was involving excavation outside of the current site and this is, there's no excavation from most of it. And furthermore, this discussion came up previously regarding RF emissions and such. If the, the board couldn't, issued denial based on those, it's not something that the local commission can review, but if they wanted to, on a, on a, as a condition of approval, or a request that the applicant comply with FCC regulations for all RF emissions as far as I can go.
Are we looking for a vote now or what?
Yeah, I should. I have a question.
Oh, okay. It's going to be a pain, but I was here for the last meeting, Mr. Brooks. I think, I, I appreciate the comment that he made. You've got one carrier here right now that wants to put those up on the tower or up on the telephone poles. So when boost, eight, nineteen, and all the rest of them want to do it, how's that going to be regulated? So instead of having towers that are going to, you know, ruin the landscape or whatever or take up all that, now you're going to have these, you're going to have clusters as, as Brooks had said. So are you going to regulate it as, okay, so you're going to be able to put, put up the Verizon one on that? So will they, will they be able to host all the other carriers also or is that going to be, will it be another fight?
Matt?
I hadn't got through the entire document, but I did catch on to something about that regarding competitive, competitive nature of this. And those are regulated through the FCC also. It's.
It's federal?
Yeah, and there's a capacity requirement. I don't think it's the four that I mentioned earlier, but there is also a capacity for each structure. And I defer to the applicant possibly.
Yeah, you know, there's, there's no way to stop anyone else from proposing to do the same thing. When you look at the big picture, the, the demand for the service that we sell and provide is huge. Something everybody wants and just about everybody uses right now to a great extent and the demand is growing every single day. So it really becomes an issue of, you know, how do we meet that demand? It's not magic. We, the mobile devices that everyone has in their pocket do not work without some sort of base station or structure to create that network with antennas. This is leaps and bounds ahead of what we were doing two years ago. It's so much better. You know, to say that it would be a bad thing to have every carrier doing it this way seems contradictory to me. It would be a good thing. It would, it would be what I think we should want. This is very unobtrusive. It doesn't really affect the landscape at all. I don't think you would notice these.
And the technology changes so quickly that likely something better would be coming down the pipe. Mr. Brooks, you had something that you wanted to add?
You represent?
Verizon Wireless.
Right. So you're saying that because you're going to be allowed to put these up, you will no longer require antennas in any case?
No, we, we still need the existing facilities as I explained before.
I'm not talking about existing, additional. You won't be looking to put additional antennas for Verizon anywhere when you're allowed to put these boosters up?
No, that's not true at all. As I explained before, what these do is meet a specific demand in a very dense area. So this can be used instead of a tower in certain situations. This is not the cure for everything.
Because I think the people, some people are misunderstanding that it, once you allow these, you don't have towers going up anymore.
This is an alternative for towers for this particular problem. I can't tell you that this works everywhere and that this, this means no new towers ever again, but where this can be deployed instead of a tower, we're going to do this because it looks better, it's less expensive, it's much quicker, it, it's better for everybody.
But also you probably wouldn't be allowed to put the tower in that area anyways.
In this particular area, I think there are several places we probably would be allowed as the federal law controls this. If there's a need to provide this service that the American public demands and this particular area is the best way to serve that need, then we have to put it there. We have the obligation to do the best we can to make it the least obtrusive alternative. And I, this to me is a no-brainer. It's by far the least obtrusive alternative in this particular application. I, I can't tell you there will never be another tower again, but this is what we're doing in, in dense areas right now and it works well.
Mr. Weaver?
I would just say, millions of Americans have already made their choice and if they weren't supportive of cellphone technology, they should not have one. And therefore, you know, this is the infrastructure that's required to do that. I think it's, it's good that it's small. I think, you know, an applicant's done a lot to address any concerns I might have. I might move that we close the hearing.
Second?
I have one, I have one question here. Where you've got your, your AC/DC converter and your, your FuseLink and your Lightning Arresta, okay? It says down here that they're from, it gives a varied height to that. It says from five point, five to eight point five feet.
That's to the bottom of the meter. So the, the converters in all of our equipment is 10 feet above the ground. The meter is going to be placed how the utility company requires it and that's simply because they can't read it.
Can't read, yeah. But, but the AC/DC converter and the other, and the other units are at 10 feet?
Yeah, if you look.
Because it doesn't say, it doesn't say they're at.
It does, if you look to the left of where you're seeing five to eight point five, all the way to the left, you'll see 10 feet AGL bottom of equipment.
Right here?
Yep.
That doesn't say.
That particular one's 15. I'm looking at the other pole which is 10, so that one's going to be even higher.
All right. That's, that's my, that was my, some kid with a baseball bat. You'd be out of business.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And that matters more to us than it does to you probably, and that's why we place it that way. The meter itself, as you know, is built to withstand probably a nuclear blast. That's how the utility company does it because it's got to be down low so that it can be read. But, yeah, we put our equipment up as high as we can to keep it away from the public.
Most of them are red drive-by now.
Are what?
Most of the meters are red drive-by.
Yeah, they use scanners now.
Yep, that's true. But I, I don't know that much about the technology, but I think they still have to be within some proximity. And, you know, and I don't know why the utility company may require it to be lower. We don't have a whole lot of say in where the meter goes. If they tell us, put it here, we're putting it here, just as with any other building. It's, it's not our call.
Jonathan?
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Make a motion to approve the special permit application by cell.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Mr. Brooks is opposed.
So the vote being 401 versus 401. Any conditions?
Consistent with FCC regulations as you.
It's not really holding a house.
Right. So just the FCC?
Do you need me to remake the motion?
Yes, just.
So make the motion to amend the motion to approve the special permit application with the condition that it is consistent with all FCC guidelines?
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed?
All right, thanks very much.
All right, thank you.
I'll have the decision drafted for the board to sign at the next meeting.
Okay, thanks. Do you know what?
Twenty-six.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to go back to the William Street. Matt has some information.
Thank you. So just to remind the folks here and the folks at home, this hearing is now closed. It's internal discussion with the board and administration. Just want to bring, just to our own attention how we got here and some members were absent, so I just want to make sure, presenting this properly. So plans were revised for this meeting in accordance with a meeting that was held at the Development Coordinating Group on March 4th. The DCG, that's our department heads, engineering, planning, water, sewer, fire, police, et cetera, came up with a handful of criteria for the applicant to meet. Those were to obtain all necessary permits and inspections from town departments. The location of existing septic systems must be shown on the plan to ensure they're not located within 150 feet of a well. Turns out that this is all sewer, so there aren't existing septic. Rooftop runoff and foundation drains included in the stormwater management system, this was shown on the new plan. Earth fill removal calculation shown on the plan and included in the application, that change was made also. Sewer work was performed by a western drain layer, that condition was listed on their plan. Proposed address for the new dwelling must be shown on the plan, that was shown on the plan. The physical display of the street address must be on the proposed building in accordance with the fire department's general bylaws, section 16.02, that was added to the plan. In addition to that, the plan does show, does conform with the hammerhead lot special permit criteria, that being the dimensions, the consistency of the character of a hammerhead lot, the minimum square footage requirements, so on and so forth. I won't get too far into that, however. And it's kind of seems the way that the board is, is feeling towards this application. It is a special permit and is subject to the requirements of section 9.3, as Mr. Weaver pointed out. Those findings are, 9351 I mentioned earlier, the degree to which the activity, site plan and building design are consistent with surrounding development. Number two, capability of the town to serve the premises considering existing roads, town equipment and other municipal services. Number three, the impact on town's educational facilities. Number four, consequences for adjoining premises of sound light, odor, noise or other disturbances. Number five, the degree to which the proposal results in air or water pollution, topographical change, removal of mature trees or other botanical assets, removal of cover of vegetation, risk for erosion or siltation, increased stormwater runoff from the site or displacement of natural habitats. Number six, site distance and traffic safety at the entrance to town roads or other public ways. Number seven, I think this is one Mr. Brooks was looking for, environmental compatibility of proposal with the neighborhood character. Number eight, employment and fiscal consequences. Number nine, the degree to which the proposed development is consistent with Auburn's revised master plan. This being said, if the board is leaning towards a direction for what, in my opinion, may be a vote of denial, I would, I would ask that they provide town administration some time to ensure that the neighborhood is consistent with some of these detractors that the board is asking before we make a vote. And since we have 90 days or the board has 90 days to do so, I recommend tabling the vote to the next meeting to give us some time to look into that, to make sure that the board's opinion is valid.
Once again, is that enough time now?
Yes. We have 90 days to do that. I think it'll be, I think it'll be valid time.
Okay.
You think two weeks would be?
I don't have the problems. Because I think 9351 applies, 9355, the stormwater section, and 9357, I believe, the environmental impact or the neighborhood of the impact.
Okay. If it's okay with the board, I'd like to use those three as a guide when making my.
Inquiries?
Yes.
Okay. So the hearing's been closed. Do we need a vote to continue to? No, we'll just plan on discussing it at the April 26th meeting and taking the final vote at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have some minutes to flow through. I've got a few corrections, not much, but I'll just hand them over so that the motion to approve the, I don't have 2009, I have 223.
That's a surprise. You found, you found the correction.
Three, eight, 22.
That's, that's a surprise. Isn't that a surprise? I wasn't surprised.
You know, after having done minutes for many, many years, Mr. Raffa, you know, you look at it with a critical eye. Anyways, I just had a motion for, to approve the meeting minutes from February 9th, 2016. Number one?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve February 23rd meeting minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Hold on. Sorry, discussion.
Okay, second.
That's correct.
Um, I'll, I'll say.
Right. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
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 And I'll give these to you.
Thank you.
I'll give those to you. Meeting minutes from March 8th.
I'll make the motion to be approved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Aye. I abstain. Jim stays. And finally, March 22nd.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I abstain. Yep, two abstentions. Okay, no signatures. Board discussion, MDI grant. Matt, you're up.
Thank you very much. So just recently, we received grant approval, a state grant for technical assistance from the state for the Jersey Square Village District proposal. And I know in the past, we've been working with CMRPC on a draft bylaw. This is a piggyback of that. This, the purpose of the MDI grant, and it's a $10,000 technical assistant, where we'll be assigned a, we've already been set up with someone who's going to be providing assistance for us and their job is to set up a charrette, a vision workshop with the stakeholders, everyone who owns property in the area, to come up with some of the ideas towards building this village bylaw and collecting that information at the vision workshop and then producing it or adding it to our, our draft.
Do you have any tentative dates?
The kickoff meeting is scheduled for April 28th, which is a Thursday.
And where is that?
At one o'clock and it'll be located in this room.
Um, long impact development grant?
Can I, just really quick on that? This board and yourself have already done a lot of work on the Village District bylaw. The charrette process, I get the concept of that. I think that's something that was supposed to be, though, included as part of our CMRPC existing work. So my only comment or feedback would be, I think it'd be an added benefit to the town if we were able to work with the grant that we've just received to have it add additional value rather than replicating something that.
Agreed.
We've already received CMRPC grant hours to accomplish, so is that negotiable in any way?
Yeah. Our technical assistance grant with CMRPC, they hadn't accomplished that part of it yet, so. And the employee who'd been helping us out just took a job as planning director in a town of Ethel. So they stopped right at where it was time to do this. So timing just happens to work out where now the state can come in and give us this assistance. So the hours for the TA on our behalf is, once the state is done with theirs, we can use some of those hours with CMRPC to finalize the draft and possibly put it to our town meeting.
My recommendation would be not to do that, and would instead be to hold CMRPC to that which they promised us, and to have their new person come in and to conduct that part of it, because I feel like that aligns closely with what CMRPC could do well. And then my suggestion would be to consider having, you know, seeing what the skillset is of this new grant, and seeing if we couldn't leverage that to do something that CMRPC isn't as strong at. And be happy to participate in some conversations to that effect.
And, you know, how does the, you know, the master plan update fit in with all of that as well? You know, that might be an opportunity.
Yeah, I agree.
Bring that into it as well.
Good information to bring forward at the 28th meeting with the representative.
And find out if the grant money covers anything that they're going to do in this new project.
Sure. Okay. Appreciate it.
And that none of it comes out of the general fund.
Right.
Next. Massachlin, for the low impact.
Oh, sorry, yes, the low-impact development grant. As you can tell, we have a handful of grants that we're working on collectively, so low-impact development, technical assistance we receive from Mass Audubon, and CMRPC is having their meeting on next week, April 19th, with, it's a meeting with the zoning bylaw review committee to provide some of the updates that they've made to our open space residential development bylaw, our planning board subdivision rules and regulations, and promote those to the bylaw review committee for feedback, and that information can then be taken forward as updates to our board.
Okay, and that's on April 19th, you said? And where is that being held?
7:00 PM in this room.
Okay. Master Plan Committee update?
I may defer to where our Master Plan Committee delegate.
Well, we've each taken a piece of the master plan reviewing for areas where we can update identifying stakeholders and also, you know, trying to identify things that we feel are missing since the last update of the master plan. So we've each, we're each taking a stab at a particular section that we, you know, feel we have kind of an expertise in, and that's where we are.
Furthermore, we've gone through, and I think you've alluded to this, but we've gone through the recommendations, crossed off the ones that we've accomplished so far, and as different members of the board, we'll be reaching out to town administration to continue to collect updates so we can update the document. Not going to happen overnight, but.
No, it's a lot of work.
Continue to update us, since it is a subsidiary board to this board. Continue to update.
Okay. And the zoning bylaw review, finally?
And to the chair, I already mentioned that they are meeting next week with the Low-Impact Development Committee. Regarding their primary focus right now being the RMB bylaw that we're hoping to get in front of the town meeting before the expiration of the moratorium, I had provided some information that I thought would be of interest to the planning board. Number one being that the town of Grafton was recently in the telegram for a facility that showed up in town because the town didn't have any bylaws or regulations to govern it.
Or anything in place.
Right.
When is that moratorium over?
Ours expires October 27th of this year. So the zoning bylaw review committee is hammering out different aspects of the draft bylaw that we've all seen, with urgency to get, to get something in front of town meeting or, oh, sorry, this board and a public hearing before town meeting in advance of that deadline. Yes. We need, well, not for a town meeting in May, because we've already missed that, but there's still some adjustments to make. May have to hold a special town meeting, not sure yet. We need further clarification from the AG if the waiting period from a fall town meeting, if there's three months before they get to the review, we need to know if we're susceptible to growth in that time. Even though we say passed it at town meeting, there's still a review period, and if our moratorium's expired during that window, are we open to something coming in, despite having passed it?
You're going to get an opinion on that?
Yeah, and that's one of the things we're worrying about.
And it seems to be moving at a, at a much quicker pace. Boosters approved a couple now, and Grafton's got, and Shrewsbury, and so it's something that needs to be, we need to get it in place.
And just as an example, the board so far has made a declaration to limit it to one facility, whether it's cultivation or retail in town. And they've doubled the buffer zone from schools, areas where children congregate from 500 feet to 1,000 feet.
That's the federal limit anyway.
Yes. And they've also added a 250-foot residential buffer zone to all applicable zoning districts, industrial zoning districts. Right now, they're trying yet to determine which zoning district fits best, and we met with the DCG this, at the tail end of March, and made a recommendation for an area in town that isn't in the aquifer, doesn't have any of the areas where children congregate. It seems to be the Melbury Street, Technology Drive area. That's going to be in front of them next meeting to discuss as possible zoning area.
That's my backyard.
That's my backyard.
Yeah, that's the.
I told you our file suit would be yours attorney.
Yeah, the, and I know you always mention at our hearings, with the federal law being one way and the state being the other, we also located some language in the recommendations from the state to say the planning board cannot prohibit the use in site federal law. So it's one of the things we can't do as a board and say we're going to prohibit these facilities because it's illegal federally.
And that was in the guidance, correct? The municipal guidance?
It expressly lists that as one of the things.
That would have to be done individually.
Right.
That wouldn't be out of the board.
So I just wanted to give everyone an update on where that's at. It's going to be coming to us in the form of a public hearing in the future.
What date is the era?
October 27th. Okay. Next meeting is April 26th. Anything else?
These wacky, they're wacky lead.
Just send a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.